Six o'clock, so would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting. Are we the Select Board yet?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. We're going through transition. We will soon be officially designated as a Select Board, which is apparently true in most communities in the Commonwealth. And it is Monday, May 1st, and we welcome all of you here. I've added, for the benefit of all, particularly the Select Board members, a new category called Welcome Comments from the Chair. That's more or less an opportunity to remind people of upcoming events or meetings or something unusual. Think of it as housekeeping. And there is an important housekeeping matter tonight to talk about. A reminder of the annual town meeting tomorrow. So we do have an annual town meeting tomorrow at the new middle high school near the library where we had it last May, and that's at 7:00 PM. So we welcome all. There's plenty of parking, and we hope we have a good turnout. Also, Board of Selectmen already know this, but we should get together at 6:30 in the cafeteria over there and go over some, any remaining items that we've got to polish up on or speak to our lawyer about. They'll be in attendance. So I look forward to that, and that's those are my housekeeping chores for this evening. For acknowledgements and recognition, we have two wonderful people who passed away recently. Bob McCarthy, Robert McCarthy, also like to be known as Rocket, passed away on April 29th at the age of 78. We all know Bob from the time on the Finance Committee. He did a wonderful job for us for a number of years. He was a great guy. Bob was born in Fall River, son of the late John and Margaret Scanlon McCarthy, and had resided in Westport for most of his life. A U.S. Army veteran of the Vietnam War, he served his country overseas stationed in Berlin, Germany with the Intelligence Unit. Bob was a proud graduate of Saler Regina University, where he earned his master's degree in criminal justice. He retired as a lieutenant in the Massachusetts State Police and had also taught at various Massachusetts police academies. He then took on a second career as a Director of Education in compliance for the Diocese of Providence. Bob was a great guy. We offer to his family our sincere condolences. I knew him and enjoyed the pleasure of his company for many years on the Finance Committee. When I became Selectman, he took me aside and said, "Now here's what you gotta do if you want to be successful." A great guy with a great sense of humor. Others would like to make comments about Bob.
Yeah, I served for five years on the Finance Committee with Bob, and he's just so deeply cared for Westport. He was a little bit ornery sometimes in the meetings and kept us on our toes a lot, and I really appreciated that about him, that he wasn't afraid to speak up for what he thought was right. And he really loved this community and just is deeply rooted here. So it's going to be a great loss, and my condolences to his family.
Any other comments? Well, he will be sorely missed. And also recognise the passing of Gerald E. Cowell, who passed away on April 13th. Gerald was a resident of Swansea, but he was, he worked in Westport as a fireman and also a police officer, I think, and Reserve Police Officer. He had an interesting career. He was an EMT at one time, a stockbroker, owner of a photo lab. His main passion was photography, which he practiced professionally for many years. Again, to his family, we extend our heartfelt sympathies and condolences. I did not know Gerald, but it looks like he was a wonderful person and did a lot for the town of Westport. Does anybody, does anybody know him?
Both of them, you know, had a big commitment to Westport. We appreciate it. And both of them, their family continues to, you know, work for the public. So we appreciate it. Anybody that's been around for a few years might have remembered his photo shop before everything was digital. He had a photo lab on Route 6 on the One Topo, so, yeah, so. He was around for a while, and I worked with him on both departments, police and fire. He was an energetic fellow and got things done.
He will be sorely missed. Okay, moving on. We do not have any licenses and permits tonight. That's mentioned on the agenda, but that was a placeholder. There are no items in that regard. So we will move to the rest of the agenda, which starts with the category Appointments and Resignations. So the first one, 2A, is a request from Beverly Bish, the Council on Aging Director, to appoint Mark Perry as a part-time van driver. Beverly, would you like to come forward and introduce us? Mr. Perry?
I'd like to introduce Mark Perry. He's gonna join our group at the COA as a van driver. And many of the folks that come to the COA know Mark because he worked right around the corner. But I will let him talk about his history.
I worked at the West Postal Service in Westport. I worked on State Road, Old County Road, and Adamsville. So I get to interact with a lot of people in Westport. They get to know me pretty well.
Great, great to have you forward.
Thank you.
Well, okay, any discussion from the Selectmen? Do we have a motion here?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion carries unanimously with one absence. Thank you, Ms. Perry.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Glad to have you on board. Thank you, Beverly. Good to see you again.
Back in two weeks with another staff.
Okay.
I tell ya, I'm on a roll. It's like every two weeks, so.
We'll look forward to it.
Thank you.
The next is a request to appoint Jim Hartnett, our own Jim Hartnett, as Joint Transportation Planning Group, JTPG, Representative. And that relates, does that relate to the SERP?
SERP, yes.
I'll move him.
But you didn't get through the whole?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
And Michael Burris as the alternate, Michael is the town planning.
Correct.
Right in the back row.
Right in the back.
Oh, okay. It's good to see you again. Okay, that's the.
Now can I do it?
Yeah.
All right, move to a point.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That motion carries unanimously with one absentee. So congratulations, you, Mr. Hartnett, on your new role.
Thank you.
He's been doing it for years.
At least you get some recognition.
I'm glad we had to appoint you when you weren't already there.
Reappointment.
The next item, I don't know if the gentleman is here, but is a request from Christopher Thrasher to be appointed to the Economic Development Task Force. And I was going to ask here, when we do these appointments to a committee, we should check with the Chair to see if the Chair would support that, and I assume that was done?
It was.
The Chair's the arrate.
He's the Chair.
Ooh, a lot of roles.
I also got an email from Maury May that they welcome him.
Maury, yeah. Yes, we'll take him with you.
My thought Maury was the Chair, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. He's the vice chair. I'll move him.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. It passes again. Four in favor, none opposed, and one absence. And we know Christopher, and he'll do a good job for you, I'm sure. The request from Mr. George Ripley, this is item 2D. Request from George Ripley, Library Director, to appoint Dan Sheehan as Principal Library Clerk, effective May 8, 2023, and to post the Library Aid I part-time position internally and externally. I don't know if anybody's here for this.
He did email and actually called as well. They're open tonight, so they're working tonight.
Okay.
We can move without him.
What is the pleasure of the meeting?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion carries once again. Four in favor, none opposed, and one absentee. This is now a joint meeting of the Westport Housing Authority to address the request of Judy Menard to fill the unexpired term on the Housing Authority. In terms of protocol, does the, does the meeting have to be called by the Housing Authority?
They should open a meeting, yes.
Open a meeting?
Do you want to have them come forward?
Who, Ronnie, would you like to do that? Just Zach?
Do you have the other members here also?
Yeah.
All the members are here.
All right, the meeting is in session.
Meeting's in session.
Welcome.
Thank you. This is the new Chair, however.
Good, a worthy candidate.
Okay, yes.
All right, so I'll call our meeting to order as well. Do we have to vote for them?
Well? You bring it up, but no.
All right. So yes, so we're requesting that we put Judy on to fill the unexpired term. We unfortunately lost a really good soul, for sure. We couldn't serve on the Board anymore due to health issues, so we are requesting to add Judy on.
Okay. And when is this effective? Is this immediately?
Hopefully immediately. We've been without a representative for about a year.
Okay.
And it's, my understanding, it's only, can be an appointment for one year.
One year.
The term does not expire till '25. However, according to state law, it has to go on the ballot.
Oh, okay.
So we can only make an appointment for one year, and then it has to go on the ballot next year to take the final year.
Okay. Okay. Judy, do you wish to say anything?
Sure.
You have to go to a mic, though.
And these mics are taken, so I'll have to ask you to go there, but that should be convenient.
Just to let you know, I have previously served on the Housing Authority. I was elected to apply to the term, fulfill that. And as you maybe remember, they changed the law, and it had to be attended person. So that was my position when it came back to running again. I was not allowed to run. So I've been off since, kind of waiting for an opportunity. Nothing's come up, obviously, before I finish my terms. It was only because of the resignation due illness that I said I would be available. So joining again, how about it is, when he said 15 years, we'll see about next year. That was an elected position, so we'll go for it.
Great, glad. Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Okay, and what is, there'll be two votes involved here. What is the sentiment of the Select Board?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Four, zero, one absence. And you probably have to do the same.
I'll move for the Housing Authority. Do we point to you now?
All right. Positions? Questions, comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Congratulations, Judy. It's official, and good luck to you.
You need to close.
You need to adjourn your meeting.
You need to close your meeting, actually.
All right, now our meeting's adjourned.
No, you have to.
Motion to adjourn. All right. Motion seconded. Good. All those in favor?
Great. Thank you for being here. We appreciate your presentation, and we'll see you around. Okay, the next item, which would be 2F, it's the request from Andrea Dunbar to be appointed to the Recreation Commission. Is Andrea here or a member of the Recreation Commission? Jim, do you know? The person doesn't have to be here necessarily, but we always ask that.
There is a letter in the file, but not here.
Okay, that's all right. And what is the pleasure of the committee?
We need people.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Probably not. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Same, same count. Four, zero, one. Now, the next one is 2G. This is, this is a little more worthy of an explanation. Okay, it has to do with the Board of Registars. It's a request to appoint two of the following nominees, and I'll mention the names, to the Board of Registars. And one is to fill the unexpired term, which will run through April 1, 2024. And the second is to fill a vacant position, which is a three-year term, to expire April 1, 2026. So we've got two items here, and we have four candidates. The four candidates for the two positions are Catherine Caton, Robert Alves, John Cabral, and Pamela Costa. The Select Board has options here. I would think that would be good to do these separately and decide one of the terms, then the remaining candidates would vie for the other position. And it seems to me logical to do the three-year term first, which is where there's presently an incumbent and where it's a longer term, and resolve that, and then proceed to the next. So what, I guess is the way to do this, we could have a vote, or we could have a motion made?
I move Pamela Costa for the term expiring April 26. I second.
Motion made and seconded.
I do have a question.
Yes.
So you have in here that the term is through April 1, 2024, and April 1, 2026, but shouldn't that be through the April election? Isn't, so that's, is April 1 just the way it goes?
By the Board.
So what happens in the April election, then, if you have?
They don't want them for the election. The Board appoints.
Right, but you'd have a person, you'd have a vacant seat on the Board of Registars with an election coming up in a week later? That's just how it works?
Yes.
Okay.
This is good to have you here.
Hi, Pamela Costa. I've actually been the Chair of the Board of Registars for the past two years now. And it's my term that actually expired unknowingly to me. The Board of Selectmen is actually responsible 45 days before the term is going to expire to send a certified letter to the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town Committees requesting a list of three names to be submitted so the Board can vote on it. It should technically be done around February or so, so that expiration on April 1 doesn't happen.
I see.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
So Jim, it's our fault that we're not addressed. I just want to clarify, because I was looking at Ms. Caton going on. I want to make sure Pam kind of like ignored, if you will.
I would say it's partly our fault.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, we've had that clarification now, so we should do that in the future. Okay, any further discussion? This is, repeat the motion again?
Pamela Costa for the term expiring 4/26, the April of 2026 is the three-year term.
Okay. Any discussion, any further discussion, I should say? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, we congratulate Ms. Costa for another three-year term. Thank you.
I move Catherine Caton for the position expiring 2024.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. That motion carries unanimously. We congratulate her. We also thank the other candidates and hope we see more of you in the future.
Thank you.
Wish you all the best. Thank you. Now, we move to action items, of which there are several. The first is to request a, request to waive the water billing late fees for 66 State Road and 53 Old Bedford Road. Jim, maybe you can.
Yeah, so this is, as you know, we changed the water meters over this past year. And it took probably about three or four months to do that. So we did not send bills out in between June and December. So the bills that these two businesses got were very large bills. We also replaced two of the meters in each facility with one meter. So there was some confusion about the meter readings themselves. So we sent it out to be reread again, just to confirm the actual amounts, which were very high. That kind of delayed the billing, so our billing went out a little bit late to these two businesses. Well, they went out on time, but after we did the second reading, it had some time passed. So their bills came in about, I think, five or six days late, and they were assessed penalties, and the penalties are very, you know, they're significant, $1,800 and $731 for being a few days late. But the main reason why they're so high is because we didn't bill them over a seven-month period. I think this is partly due to the way we replaced the meters, which is the only way to do it, right? It takes time to do that, but I think this is something that I would recommend waiving this one time for these two fees.
I'll move it to the extenuating circumstances.
I'll second.
Okay. These water bills, are they payable to us at the town of Fall River?
They're payable to us.
Okay. And the motion is being made because of the, we've actually contributed to this unwittingly, no harm intended, but. And how much is at stake?
So there's $1,815,48 from one of the businesses and $731.60 from the other.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I have a question. So they're still paying for the water? This is just the late fee that we're waiving here, right?
Yeah, the late fee. Yeah, good clarification. Okay. And that motion has been made and seconded. I take it. I have to keep track of these motions. I think you reminded me of that last week, didn't you, last time?
It's harder than he thinks it is to remember if they've been.
He wanted it. He's got it, kid.
So motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That includes my own aye, any no's, and there are none. That also carries four, zero, and one abstention. The next item is from the Planning Board, a request to seek comments and recommendations regarding a definitive subdivision plan entitled Definitive Subdivision in Heritance Lane, four-lot subdivision assesses plat 43 Lot 3, Old Pine Hill Road. Jim, I know you can talk to this, but I see Mr. Hartnett is here. Either one of you can address this to us?
Mr. Whaden. It's a three, a four-lot subdivision that Planning Board usually refers to the Board of Selectmen to see if there's any comments. I don't have any particular comments on it.
I don't have any. I have none.
Your eyes.
Yeah.
So we don't, I don't think we need to vote on this, just as simply we.
You might want to see if anyone from the public wants to talk about it.
We do that.
Anyone from the public? Okay. Sometimes you get a lot of people in here.
Yeah. Don't remind me, but anyway. Okay. So we don't have any comments, and that should be so noted. I don't think we require a motion on these types of items, so.
No action.
We go forth, Mr. Whaden. Thank you.
Well, he might be here for something else.
Are you here for some bills?
He might just be here if he wants to.
The SERP, I believe.
The SERP thing.
SERP.
Okay. Yes, okay. Just looking to see when that would be coming up shortly. We'll move along. The next item is 3C, the request from the New England Race Events LLC to hold the annual Horse Neck Beach Half Marathon on Sunday, May 21st, beginning at 9:00 AM at the State Beach and ending at the State Beach. They are also requesting a one-day wine and malt beverage liquor license to serve after the race, and those would be designated between the hours of 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I don't, do we have anybody here representing that organization? I know you have in the past.
He wasn't able to make it.
Okay, that's okay.
Do we have the police recommendation?
Yes.
They recommended it in the details?
Yep.
Because I know there was an issue last year with traffic back and whatnot. We could turn it on.
All right.
So I'll move it subject to police approval or recommendation, since I didn't hear Steve just say that.
Yeah, I was just still looking for.
We have it already. We have police approval.
Yeah, okay, second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Any public comments? Anybody? Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. And the motion carries unanimously with one abstention. The next item is D. 3D. A request from Lawrence E. Kitchen III of Dartmouth for a Hicksbridge pass for his father, Lawrence Kitchen Jr., who resides in Westport. I think this is a familiar request. Mr. Hartnett, do you have anything to say about it?
Yeah, I believe this was granted the last few years. The father is legally blind and can't drive, but he does do shell fishing, and they use the Hicksbridge ramp. So the son drives and parks the car.
All right, and I don't think we have any issues with it, and the family's been here a very long time, so I'll move it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Any comments? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. And that motion again carries. Four, one, and one abstention. Item E, 3E, is a request to approve amendments to the East Beach Settlement Agreement. I'm familiar with this, but Jim, why don't you mention?
Yeah, the amendments were very minor, mostly clerical, just kind of correcting some references. They also had to submit a list of association members that they did submit, and that's included in the package, so there were no significant or material changes in the amendments from the original agreement. So I'd recommend approving changes.
On this item, I was part of the discussion to settle the East Beach issues, and we did reach a settlement, but there were some mostly type, typos and things of that nature, nothing of substance. And we did receive from the Association the list of members, I understand. So that sort of completes that, and we're often, often moving. And in fact, the trailers were there, announced they were there over the weekend.
You signed off yourself or the measure?
Well, I can sign off. Yes, I was authorized at one of the previous meetings.
That's right.
Okay, so I move it.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. It carries. And the last of these items, this grouping, is a request from Chris Gonzales, Highway Surveyor, to post a seasonal clerk position. Jim, maybe you can give us the background on that.
Chris could not make it today. He was busy chasing horses around on Route 88. There were some trees, quite a few trees that were down after last night's storm. Anyway, it's a busy time of year for them. He's looking for some seasonal help in the office itself to get through some of the street construction projects, as well as some of the summer projects that they work on themselves. So he's looking for permission just to get a seasonal person in there to help out with some of the clerical work over the summer.
He's staying with his budget, correct?
Within his budget, yes.
So move.
Second, but I have a question.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
So this is a new position in the department, right?
Yes, so it's seasonal.
So, well, I know we have seasonal laborers there, and we have temporary, so I just want to.
Yes, it would be a new.
So, and, but the clerk position is a union position. So are they, are we running afoul of the union here if we have somebody in there?
He said he has talked to the union, and we have not had any.
Okay.
Doesn't mean we won't as we move forward, but right now we don't.
No, yeah, okay. I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure, because you're kind of having someone doing union duties as a seasonal clerk, so. But I guess that's true of the seasonal laborers, too. They're doing union duties. Okay.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Same count. Four, zero, and one abstention.
Abstent.
Abstent. The fourth, the fourth grouping here, discussion items, and will these guests be joining us? Or do we have, okay, have somebody here? Okay, let me just announce the item, and you may come and sit here because you're making the presentation. This is SERPAD Southeastern Massachusetts Priority Area Regional Plan Update. I'd ask you to introduce yourself.
Yes, hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Philip Hu. I am a Principal Comprehensive Planner at SERPAD.
Well, glad to have you here tonight. So will you be making a presentation here?
Uh, yes.
Okay, well, I'd say.
Yeah, Jim's trying to get it up.
Should be very, very short.
Do you know Jim Whain?
Yes.
Okay, Jim Whain and I have SERPAD permissions. Just seeing up.
I usually control L.
It's fine with me. I don't have a phone.
There's, full screen, if you scroll down, it says full screen.
Full screen, go down, down. There you go.
Please.
Fire one ready.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so again, my name is Philip. I'm a Principal Comprehensive Planner. And we're here today because, one, we want, we're a regional planning agency. We serve all of our communities, but we don't want to, you know, do top-down planning. We're not here to impose this upon you. So we want to make sure that we're seeking buy-in from every single one of our communities before we start planning. So in a way, we're getting permission to work with your community to start this regional plan. And the second part is just giving you a quick overview of what these priority areas are and how they help your community. So what is a PDA and what's a PPA? You know, planners love jargon. So the priority areas are divided into the Priority Development Areas and the Priority Protection Areas. So Priority Development Areas are areas that are identified for additional growth, whether it's housing or economic development. They meet a regional need, and they usually have good access to transportation and infrastructure, or if they need infrastructure, we kind of highlight that. Priority Protection Areas, on the other hand, are areas that are important to protect. These are either significant natural or cultural resources. So, these include habitats, water resources like aquifers, historic resources, and agriculture. So, how do we determine where these PDAs and PPAs go? So, we kind of have human data, which is like zoning, land use, infrastructure, that we kind of pull together. And then on the kind of environmental side, we have habitats, water resources, and conservation areas. And we use these data layers to help inform us where these priority areas should go. So, this isn't our first rodeo. In two thousand eight, this was kind of the first pass. It was done kind of in response to the South Coast Rail. And these were kind of general hand-drawn areas that identify where these places are. In two thousand thirteen, they, we revisited these PDAs and PPAs and refined the boundaries using kind of more sophisticated data, and there is a much more civic engagement involved to determine where these PDAs and PPAs would go. So, what are we doing differently this time? Not too much. We are really here because it's been ten years since the previous update, and we want to update boundaries based on new data. Some places have changed. Maybe these priority areas aren't priorities anymore. We hope to use also more modern civic engagement. So, COVID has really shown us that virtual engagement is a really great tool for us to meet with more community members. So, we hope to roll out an interactive map to solicit feedback, as well as surveys to better understand the region's needs. And we also hope to provide much more specific recommendations and potential design and development explorations of key sites to really help our communities actually get stuff done. So, you know, why are we doing this? Why are we spending two years on this process? Well, these are really, really beneficial to our communities. So, what's the benefit of a PDA? So, a PDA designation can help a community coordinate a lot of their local planning and also win competitive grants. If the state sees that a certain area is a PDA, that helps boost the case for acquiring certain grants and funding. So, in North Attleboro, because this area near their downtown was designated as a PDA, they had funding to update their zoning. They also got a one-point-three-million-dollar Mass Works grant for improved roads and water and sewer. And the end result is one-hundred-and-ninety-three units located downtown on a former Brown Field site, which is like a former jewelry factory. So, what are the benefits of a PPA? Likewise, if you identify a certain area as a priority protection area, that helps unlock potential funding. So, after Norden updated their open space and rec plan using the PPA planning process as a foundation, they managed to get a five-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-dollar land grant for conservation acquisitions, and through this process, managed to permanently protect over one-hundred-and-fifty acres. So, in your community, there are four PDAs, seven PPAs, and one combined area. So, I'm going to actually lead you, show you a map. Test to see if I can find.
Find one part of the map. There you go.
There it is. Or am I in the right place?
Yes.
Yeah, so roughly around here, you can see that a lot of it is PPAs, and there are also little areas, generally, econo, like key corridors or downtown areas or village centers are PDAs. These are places that could accommodate some additional growth. Also, important commercial and industrial parks. And then PPAs are obviously a lot of like forests and wetlands and other ecologically sensitive areas. So, you know, this was really, really great work, and all we're really here to do in this, through this two-year plan, is work with your planning department to see, you know, do these go reflect the priorities of the community? So, what's the timeline? I keep saying it's two years. So, we're in our first phase. This is the first of three local meetings we have with each of our communities. This is just asking for permission to plan and also just introduce this project to each of our communities. In this second meeting, this depends on each community. Sometime, we just want to have all the key stakeholders in the room together. So, planning, Conservation Commission, and anyone else who's really important, such as like economic development, to help us refine these PDAs. We'll bring the data, and we just need the on-the-ground knowledge of how things have changed in each community. The, and then in some communities, they do want this to be a public process, so we are definitely also open to working with that. And then the third meeting is just, you know, we go back into our little corner, and we work and refine the PDAs and PPAs based on the feedback from the second meeting. Come back and say, hey, did we get it right? And that's the third meeting. And then the last two meetings, these are two regional meetings. We bring all the PDAs and PPAs together from all of our communities and ask ourselves which of these are the kind of most important, and those get kind of a higher designation on a regional scale. So, what is your role as the board of selectmen? It's to basically just say, yeah, go ahead. Work with our planning board, work with our planner. And just also, you know, I'm also here to listen and see what are your kind of big concerns of your community? I, you know, to be honest, I only started about one and a half years, and I'm really excited to know every single one of my communities. So, that's why I was really excited to start this project. So, thank you so much. Definitely, if you have any questions or comments, would love to hear them.
Do I, on one of those slides, there was an area, and I think it was indicated in the corner, but I couldn't see it, that was like an orange-yellow color. And I was wondering what the significant-
Oh, on the map.
On the map, I'm sorry, yeah. What the, yeah, I probably have to go back. I think you just, yeah, you see there was, yeah, there's there.
Yes, sorry. That is a combined area, so it's both a PDA and a PPA, so if we click that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's a central village. So, either that means that there's a significant historic resources that we want to be really careful to, you know, preserve, but there's also room for growth, or it's an area that has both very ecologically sensitive areas, but also areas for growth.
You're in it right now.
Yeah.
Historic.
Any questions, comments?
I have a question. So, who is it that you're normally coordinating with on the town side? Is it the town planner or Economic Development?
Usually the town planner.
Yeah.
We had, at our last meeting or the meeting before at Economic Development, we had them in. Names, names slipping me right now that does the presentations for these planning and whatnot, especially Route Six corridor.
Oh, maybe Robert Cabral.
No.
Oh, no?
Was it Jackie?
Jackie.
Oh, Jackie. Okay, so transportation.
Yeah, so she came in, uh, a meeting or two ago, going over all the different areas. So, yeah, I mean, what do you need, an official vote to-
No.
Passages?
Just giving, just informing you.
Obviously, I support it, so.
Comments from the planning board? Jim?
Keep Jim busy.
And Michael, we got to keep Michael.
Michael, yeah.
Yep.
I just wanted to briefly say that I'm old enough that I participated in all the previous ones of these. And I think it was a very, very eye-opening process, and we got a lot of input from the community in the first one. And I think we had three public meetings where people would put stickers on what they thought was the best thing. And I think that, I hope that we can do the same thing. I don't know if three meetings is going to be enough, but we'll see.
Those are the times, huh?
But I think, you know, I, I think that this is a good thing. Things have changed a lot in ten years in terms of what's happening economically and protection-wise in, in Westport, so all those things have to be taken into account.
Plus the incoming infrastructure, too, so.
There's a lot of other long-range planning issues going on right now that I think will help give you some information about how the community feels about development in particular areas. I can't speak for the conservation side of things, but what we can say, I'll, I'll be trying to be, is that the Conservation Commission, well, through their, their staff, but
Sounds good.
So, I, so, um, so like, if I'm thinking, like, one of the things I've been thinking about that I know you've kind of been putting in our, in our head lately is the impact of South Coast Rail. So, this would be one of the things that you'd look at specifically, right? Because that, I don't know if that existed in two thousand thirteen as an issue. So, that's like one of the, that's one of the issues that now need to take into account, the requirements for that.
Right, so our, the requirements for us, we believe, we're not positive yet, will be a small-town adjacent community, which will mean that we'll have to zone by right high-density residential units, fifteen units per acre, to the tune of five percent of our housing stock. So, say, I don't know what the figure is, but if we have seven thousand houses, then we're going to have to provide zoning by right for high-density multifamily dwellings for three-hundred-and-fifty. That's a lot. So, we're going to have to really figure out what makes the best place. We don't have to build it. We don't have to have infrastructure. But it seems crazy not to put it where there will be infrastructure.
Does this process that they're talking about help you with that, or is that happening?
Yes, I think it will, because we're, right now, we're in the middle of trying to work with the RSB to get rezoning information for the, the whole corridor up there. And we're right in the middle of doing that. The state is going to be redoing Route Six sometime in the near Sanford or Soho. I'm not sure when.
That narrows it down.
In Philip's presentation, there was a slide where a, an identified priority development area was given funding through Mass Works. And one of the things that helped push it through was that it was identified within this planning process that they're doing. And so, you know, kind of going off of what Jim is saying, if we were to desire that sort of development at fifteen dwelling units an acre, zoning for it close to the Fall River Line, having some, you know, infrastructure that we're planning on Route Six, may not be right next to, right adjacent to Route Six, but if it's within a reasonable distance, we could be making ourselves more competitive for that kind of development in the Route Six corridor.
Thank you.
And one of the things that occurs to me, that all the purple areas are the regional PPA and PPD sections that were taken from ours. So, the ones that you see in purple in Westport, we had others that didn't make it to the regional level. So, we didn't have much input into that. So, we really have to think about the things that Michael's talking about, you know. Where they, where they would be of regional impact will help us get grants from like Mass Works.
Good.
Thank you.
Further discussion, questions, please, gentlemen? Any of you?
No, this comes along, but you, you know, obviously, I, I'm concerned with the density housing. That's going to be figured out, and I want to do it. If the units are already there, accounts that we have a hundred people near the corner there at Sanford and Six, you know, we've got to figure out a little bit of logistics. So, we'll see how it goes down the line. Yeah, there's a lot of work to be done.
Do you need anything from us in terms of votes, or?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, gentlemen. Michael? Good. Be well. Very informative.
The last guy made it.
Last but not least.
Last coastal.
Next item for B, Sean Leach, Chair of the Beach Committee. Update on Town Beach and lifeguard hiring status. Paula, you remember that committee as well, don't you? Sound good to see you.
Good evening. So, to get right to it, we're going to have a little problem staffing. There's no doubt. We have two, I think, minor obstacles. One is the age requirement, eighteen. We have people who are interested in doing it that are under the age of eighteen. However, they're not certified, and that's the second problem. Second problem is the certification. Because of the pandemic for a couple of years, they just weren't doing certifications. So, we're lacking certified, I guess, applicants more than anything in the world. The other thing, additional, the state is offering twenty-eight dollars an hour and twelve-hundred-dollar bonus, so they've scooped up everybody who we might have gotten as part of it. So, Perry Long has taken the lead in this. He's done an unbelievable job beating the ground, going to the Red Cross, going to swim clubs, doing other things, and advertising, trying to get stuff out to get people interested. I spoke with the town administrators more about getting last year's lifeguards and making phone calls and see if, who would be interested in coming back. May or may not. I don't know if it's, you know, if everybody's real interested. Because it, you know, we find that most people that are interested can only do it for a couple of months, and come the month of August, we run short every year because they have to go back to school, or either a teacher and/or student has to go back early, and we just don't have the personnel. On one of the busiest days of the year, Labor Day. So, those are, those are what we're looking at. We're trying to do what we have. What are our options if we don't have? Options is, one of the things a lifeguard could do besides safety and on the beach is it's a monitoring of behavior. If someone's sitting there and it's had an unofficial capacity, people tend to behave. If we don't have them there, we, I have a strong feeling there'll be a lot of misbehavior, including one of the items that always comes up with Audubon is dogs on the beach in the middle of the day. It's always a problem. If there's nobody there to watch them, we were thinking, do you hire monitors at the parking lot and just somebody on the beach to watch what's going on? But who wants that responsibility of telling somebody or confronting somebody in this day and age on anything? Especially an eighteen-year-old, you know, comes up to somebody who's just decided, I'm not going to take it from an eighteen-year-old. So, these are the problems we're looking forward to, who are looking at. We open in a month and a half. Hopefully, and we're hoping to have some applicants, but I'm just not sure we will have applicants. So, I don't know, you know, what other options we have. The last option is probably if we do get younger, we should have somebody who manages them, and there was a discussion about possibly Dana at the recreation, because the biggest recreation facility we have in this town is the beach.
Yeah.
There's no doubt. So, that would be part of maybe what we do to do that. If we can't get a head lifeguard or somebody, you know, who could be in charge of the scheduling and making sure people show up to work and whatnot. Because right now, we're looking at, you know, we should be ordering equipment, and I'm not sure what we have for safety equipment right now in the garage. Supposedly, we could take an inventory, but I'm not sure what would be needed. Evan Odette, who was with the head lifeguard for last ten years, did an unbelievable job in keeping everything stocked and moving and moving forward, but he's not coming back this year. So, we're looking at anybody who has an interest or would might want to step forward. We're, we're happy to talk to at this point.
Tell me about the, is there an age requirement, a minimum age of eighteen?
Eighteen, eighteen.
Is that bylaws, or is that the state, or? I thought the state had a, had lowered it.
The state's actually, I think, taking in younger people. But you can be a certified lifeguard, I believe, at sixteen, maybe even fifteen, but I definitely know sixteen.
Maybe there's hope there.
There's, there is hope. I, there is, a couple of people have approached the committee who have children who would like to do it. Again, how many of that would be? We need eight or nine would be ideal, lifeguards, because you're looking at, you know, eight-hour days, seven days a week. So, realistically, the number of hours you need and the proper coverage, you know, during the week, you need probably four, and the weekends, you need five to six, usually. Especially on Fourth of July weekends, and you need more just because of the amount of volume of people on the beach.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, so what happens if we don't have lifeguards to man the beach? Do we just put up signs and warnings, or do we-
I guess you could put it up in unguarded, I mean, they have it at Gooseberry. They have it on the beaches where they have unguarded water area. And that's what they use at Gooseberry. That's what they use, you know, unguarded. They have a life ring hanging on a post at Gooseberry. I don't know what, but I don't know if, how the town feels about that. Most people like the comfort of having a lifeguard there for whatever.
Not only the comfort, the safety.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and it's a tough beach when riptides start in August. It becomes a tough beach to be at realistically, especially if you have young children.
If you're stuck and you don't have the hirings, are you going to be able to get any lease details or something?
Well, that would be something maybe on the weekends, because that's obviously, but, you know, I, I, you know, everybody's stretched thin. We all know that. We're going tomorrow night to try to fix that problem, but we're all stretched thin, and I don't know, you know, what the availability is there. I mean, they typically have someone on the weekends down there ticketing all three beaches. But it becomes a problem. They can't be chasing people up and down.
Through the shit, back in the day, when we were low like that thirty years ago, we had somebody just on cherry and wet babysitting. Through the shit, back in the day, when we were low like that, 30 years ago, when we had somebody just on Cherry and Wet babysitting all day, it was a separate detail, and now that you're an enterprise fund, you might get stuck with some of it, though.
Yeah, even though we have an enterprise fund, you'd be surprised how little we have left over in the enterprise fund.
I know, same, you don't have to help them, you got a little bit, isn't it?
You know, yeah, we would have some money left over, obviously, for personnel items. But I don't, you know, what happens if? You know, that's something that will be decided, we'll know by June 1st, that's for sure.
You and I both through, been through tragedies down there, so hopefully we can get to that point.
And I hate to see something like that happen, you know.
Absolutely. So see what we can do. Can we put it in the website and stuff? Is there anything they can do to help the salary?
Yeah, I was going to ask about the salary, have we looked at that?
We'd have to go to Personnel Board, wouldn't we?
So it's in the personnel bylaws, so the Personnel Board would have to address it.
What do we pay now?
We bumped it up significantly last year to $21, but when the state's paying 28, it's hard to compete with that.
On the same beach.
On the same.
And bonuses at the booth?
Go over.
Yeah, and bonus $600, when they sign up, it's $600 if they stay to Labor Day.
Yeah.
It's hard, it's hard to compete with that, we don't have the money, you know, that, you know, and if the question is, do you bump them up and then raise up the beach passes to make up for the shortfall, or the, you know, exchanges, that's something to think about, too.
Well, we did that, though, not too long ago.
Yeah, that's what we did to get it to bump up last year to $21, and then it would have to go up again to get, if you go into $28, I don't know what the final figure would have to be, but obviously enough to pay for everything.
So in a normal year, whatever normal is, how much do you expend on lifeguard salaries?
About $60,000.
Was that a big chunk of the enterprise fund's reserves?
Yeah, we bring in about between 80 and 90. We lose about $60,000, we lose about 10 to administrative costs, we lose eight to the, I believe, the Audubon monitoring. It gets whittled down fast, people think we're breaking in money, and we're all taking junkets to Florida or something, but it's, it goes fast.
There is a healthy reserve, but the amount of revenue we're taking in every year now kind of balances what's going on.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we have some items pegged for future, for the reserve for future items that are important, that are coming up. But, you know, one is a new vehicle, you know, some safety equipment, or something to put the vehicle in at the beach, rather than in the parking lot over here, that can be used by the fire department, by the police department, by everybody, in case, you know, go down, unlock it, and go, you know, out of a container down at the beach. We figure that would be the safest, and you just think, especially if there is no lifeguards. You need somebody to get a rescue on the beach, you need to get out there.
Well, this is important, I mean, it's a valuable resource, and there's a lot of safety issues. Is there anything you need us to do specifically, or?
You can hire some people, if you, you know, I don't, I'm not sure what, what can be done, you know. It's, everybody, every business, every industry has this problem. It's just, it's hard to compete when somebody, you know, when somebody's giving you enough money, and, I mean, Cherry and Wet Beach would be, everybody used to fight to be at that beach, because it is not a crowded beach, it's fairly, it's a really nice beach, it's fairly a good job. It's not as busy as Horse Neck, nor is, you know, much responsibility.
The sand is nice there.
Yeah, exactly, you know, it tends to be more. Yeah, I just don't know how you, you can't hire people that don't show up, you know, it's just a sign of the times, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I asked for you to come in, because I was getting nervous, I see all this other stuff, and I was like, oh my God.
Yeah, I mean, the Cape is, I mean, this, these beaches are the caper throwing ridiculous money out.
I know. That's why we lost some personnel, too.
You know, and then the resort, the resort places, York Main, places like that, you know, $30 an hour for a lifeguard.
Nantucket's giving 30 bucks plus housing.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, you know, it's like, this is what you're competing against, and with the limited, the pandemic kind of screwed everybody for the certification. So people didn't get certified, so, you know, they go, okay, I'm not going to get it, you know, I had a motion to get it, but now I'll go work at Home Depot, or whatever, for the summer, whether you're college age or not. So now it's become a problem. Even approaching them and asking them to do a separate one, just for people who want to be certified here, would be an idea, you know, but, you know.
So that can be done in a week.
Right, yeah.
Not get somebody to do it, but.
Yeah, it's not like a six-month course or anything.
My son did it, and he did it at the Y in Hanover, we had to drive all the way to Hanover to get it done, and it was a two-day. It was a night, and then two full days, and then it was done. So you could, you could maybe get Fall River, or.
If you had enough people interested who applied for the jobs and weren't certified, you probably could get them to come down and do something.
It's not cheap either. It's not, it's not free.
No. And part of the other problem you have is you have a whole bunch of new hires, familiarity with the beach, and what goes on, and what happens is important down there, especially when it comes to the riptide, it's really important.
Well, we'll do whatever we can to support you.
Get on the website, see if we can get it on the sign or something.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anywhere else you can post it.
Website, and then.
But you can just Dartmouth, maybe, they have a pool, they saw, they have, they posted one.
Perry went over to Dartmouth, he went to New Bedford, he went to Fall River Y, he really took the, took the bull by the horns and ran all over the place, and, you know, was posting, good post flyers and stuff, and say, you know, but I'm not sure how many people will be interested. Because the DCR is paying that, I mean, as the other DCR sites, I mean, you know, I guess the primo job is their free town kiddie pool.
Well, I was going to say, like, when AJ first got his, I was like, you're not working at Horse Neck, there's no way I'm dealing with that, like, I made him go somewhere small.
So you have a foot and a half deep pool, and you sit there, and, you know, and you get paid $30 an hour. It's hard to, it's hard to compete with that, you know.
Well, thank you for your report, however challenging it is.
Not pleasant at all.
We'll do what we can to help you, just let us know.
Okay.
So you've got an appointment with Personnel, to see if we can get the funds up?
Yeah, but you're going to have to vote the town meeting, and that's not going to happen.
There's some, they do have a provision in there where if it's unanticipated, they can increase it until the town meeting, so. Since you'd be going after town meeting, they may have the ability to increase the pay.
When's the next meeting?
They schedule as needed.
Probably should at least talk to them.
Yeah, we should do something. I, I just don't know if we, you know, obviously, we're into a money issue, but we have some leftover from last year that we can carry over into this year and probably cover us.
If you can, these schedules.
If you want to increase it, you should increase it tomorrow night.
Yeah, exactly.
How are we doing the beach pass sales, do you know?
We're over 2,000. So, I don't know, what was it, less, 2,044 or something? Yeah, it was over 2,000, which at this time of year is very unusual. But we did not have a winter this year, too, and the weather has been cooperating, not in this.
Well, people are planning earlier, because they waited a couple of years ago, right?
Well, there, there's always a wait when it comes to like Memorial Day, and people just tell you, clerk, we hope that's, that has gone away. We, people have a idea of how things are done, we understand, and a lot of people, new people won't, but over 2,000, I mean, I, when I first got on the committee, we did about 2,000 total for the year. It was during the pandemic, we went from like 2,700 to 4,000, which was the.
They get a reserve fund. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, last thing on that, so it's okay with the board, I'd like to approach Dana and see if she can assist, maybe not take the whole thing over right now, but at least assist the she, getting things organized, and maybe tracking some of the equipment, if we have to bring in some training from, you know, State Beach for a day or two, just to teach a new lifeguard, or somebody to coordinate that would be helpful. Sean does most of it, but.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's a perfect fit for her, I mean, we have to, you know, you have to see how much we can do within her current responsibilities, or what we might need to give to bonus, or supplement her income for that, but I think it's a perfect fit to have her managing the beach.
Is the Beach Committee comfortable with that?
I, I would say, yeah, I've talked to Sean about it, I think they, they haven't opposed it, but I haven't formally.
Yeah, okay.
To them or the Recreation Committee, which, I'll put some feelers out.
All right, so no further action needed here, we've heard the report, and we'll support in any way we can. And Paula, you keep on, keep on, on the selectmen, do the good job here. The next item is for C, Town Meeting Warrant Article Discussion. Now, I asked Jim to put this on the agenda, although we had covered all of this last time, took it the necessary votes and had the necessary discussion, and we also talked about the need to have our meeting tomorrow at 6:30. But I just did that as a sort of a placeholder, to say if there's any further discussion. The one thing I would mention that Jim and I talked about, the Articles 23 and 24, dealing with the so-called municipal light plant, which is kind of an old name, it's more like a computer plant, and I'm not sure if it's a plant or a place where you put computers, but there are two, two items there, Article 23 and Article number 24, I guess 24 we won't, we will be passing over, because that's where I believe David Cole said this is sort of like in flux with new rules, and this may not be necessary, this Article 24, but Article 23 is needed. And I was asked by the Chair, the moderator, to read the motion, which is to adopt the Article 23, it was printed.
Actually, I'm glad you said that, because David Cole was, was concerned about who was going to do the motion, so you're going to do the motion for 23? Okay.
Yeah, Steve sent out a list of who would be making various motions. These are the only two we had, I was hoping for more, actually. It seemed like there were more when you were Chair, no?
I, yeah.
You only have two motions to make in the past?
I don't know, I feel like I've had more before, but I guess you didn't put a lot of articles on here.
Yeah, maybe. No, okay, so this is an open.
Yeah, I was the Chair, I didn't put any articles.
So, it's really just if we have any further thoughts, any comments, anything we need to know, anything we need to be ready for, and everything, and you never know, it's town meeting, and people can bring things up, and we deal with them as they come. So, I'm, I'm good to go, to the extent I know that I'm good to go, I'm good to go, and look forward to it, and.
Do you know if we have David?
I don't, I don't know.
Yes.
Last time it wasn't.
David Jenkins?
It is David Jenkins.
He said he would be here, this was about two weeks ago, I need to confirm that as well.
Okay. Are there any particular items we need to discuss with him, or is just a general overview of some things that we should be aware of?
I'm not aware of anything specific that we need to, the only thing I'm not really familiar with is the light plant, but I think David and Sean have been working with that quite a bit.
Well, Keith has a, Keith has a presentation for the town meeting to talk about it, and then, yeah, David is very well-versed, so.
And when is Keith's presentation, Keith Novo? When will he be presenting, what article is that related to? Capitol?
That was the article we just talked about, 23.
Municipal Light Plant.
The Municipal Light Plant article for.
Oh, that, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good, because I'm sure there'll be questions, and you can.
Yeah, he's got, we reviewed it on the Internet Advisory Committee, and he significantly changed it, shortened it up, and made it crisp. So, yeah, Keith Novo is going to present like a brief presentation.
Okay. Jim, any comments you have on this, are we all set to go?
I suppose I know we're all set.
Sounds like a plan.
We hope.
Are you moving, are you moving 26 also?
No, he didn't put me down for 26.
He was moving 26.
I, again, there were a couple that I thought we would have, but the pages that I'm showing?
It's on page 12. This is Long Term Building Committee.
Yeah, and it has us plus the Long Term, but the moderator said that those items relating to cash and finances, and this one has $200,000.
Oh, come from.
That would be motioned by the Finha.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and he had a, most, obviously, most of these were Finha, but that was sort of the overall guideline in the memo that he sent to me. Okay, well, that was there just to have any necessary discussion preparatory, and we'll be forward to it, and we'll be there. Okay, moving on, is the Town Administrator Report.
Yes, we're getting town meeting tomorrow night, I think we've talked about that, Article 6 is the contingency budget that would appropriate funds if an override was to pass. Board stated this a number of times, we're not approving the override tomorrow night, we're just approving funding contingent on an override being approved in the future.
Yes.
So it's the ballot that is actually going to control what, what happens with the override. Town Hall Annex, we had the septic system repaired last week, they found two blockages, one before the tank and one after the tank. We're hopeful that that will resolve most of the problems that have been going on over there over the last three or four weeks. Drift road bridge design, this is the Kirby Brook, just north of Charlotte White Road, they finished the wetland delineation, the survey, the test borings, they're working on the base plans right now, and then over the next two or three months, they'll be doing the hydraulic analysis, and once that's done, they'll be able to size the bridge or the culvert that they need to cross over that brook, so we're hoping, you know, later this fall, or into the winter, these things are slow, the projects are slow, it goes to mass highway design review, so everything takes time, but we're hoping sometime in the fall or winter to have some type of conceptual plan for what's going to be done down there. We sent proposals, request for proposals for a comprehensive energy assessment, this was required as part of the Green Communities Grant that we got for this building to upgrade the HVAC systems. You have to do this assessment as part of that process, but we also, our energy consultant, Kathy Stanley, who's been great to work with, had advised us to include all the municipal buildings, and that way, if we apply for any additional grants, which we have, the school department just applied for two big grants with the federal government for the, I think, the elementary and the MACCOM, to replace the heating systems there, which are, you know, a few million dollars, those are big projects, this will also assist with that. We got the proposals in, we need to review them and recommend. The Chair, Mr. Brewer, has volunteered to sit on the review committee, and Walter Barnes from the Energy Committee has also agreed to sit in and review the proposals. They make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen at a later date, and hopefully, we can move forward with that.
Okay, I'm glad to do that, but if I was, want to do that, that's okay, too? Did I volunteer, or was I told?
Have you been on the energy stuff for a while?
I was, I was, and I think I enjoy that, okay?
Copies and printers have been installed in both buildings, well, all the buildings, Town Hall, Town Hall Annex, I think the library, the Harbor Masters Office, cemetery, they're up and running, it's been great, because the old ones weren't getting fixed, we didn't have the pots to replace some of them, they were just outdated, they outlived their life, and it's great to have machines that are working properly, people seem happy, so that's good. Town reports, there's been some questions regarding the completion of the town reports. Calendar year 2021 is available on the website, calendar 22 is scheduled to be completed in August of this year. If there's any specific information that somebody needs from, that normally appears on the report, and they need that before it's done, to contact the Board of Selectmen office, and we'll get that information to them, so we don't want to hold anybody up. If they're missing something, we will get them that information. This is something that shouldn't have happened, but it did, and we're working to get it done quicker going forward.
I want to, go ahead.
You go ahead.
I just want to point out, I, I've actually seen a lot of talk about this online, this is a staffing issue, like, the, these, these issues that we have are staffing-related, we have too few people doing the work of more people that are, we're, we're, we're losing people, we're not getting them fast enough, we don't have proper supervision of all of the people, so, like, when people are getting frustrated because government isn't working that quickly, sometimes it's not working that quickly because we're just doing the best we can with the people that we have, and this is just one example.
They were also in that office without staff for six months, there was no administrative assistant in those two offices.
Because you, because we, this is again, a staffing thing, because we have very small departments, and so if you have one person out on leave, or has COVID, or whatever that person is out for, we do not have enough resources to cover an absence. So this, it's absolutely staffing and funding-related that these are not out there.
Okay, well, thank you for updating us on that. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Any questions for Jim? None? Then we'll move ahead, thank you. We have one approval of minutes, now that's.
Can't read that, he.
That's not you anymore, it's me.
The clerk is not here.
Clerk's out.
Clerk's out.
He approved, though, I just don't know how to go on that. I have an email saying that he approved as is, so.
So, to the Board, the Board could still vote to approve the minutes.
Yeah, we've had it in the package.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion, indicate you're saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously with one person absent, okay, thank you. Great point on the bill warrant.
It was beautiful, a whole bunch of pages, it was pretty, I signed it.
Oh, it's good.
There was no issues.
Thanks.
Things to enjoy doing that. Good, that's actually an important thing to do, and another measure of control financially. Okay, the item eight is the Selectmen or Select Board members liaison committee reports and suggestions for future agenda discussion actions. We'll start on the left tonight for no particular reason, Dan?
I didn't have any meetings. So I mentioned the Internet Advisory Committee went through detail, the, the handout for town meeting and presentation for town meetings, I think it's pretty well buttoned up. Keith did give an update that all of the town facilities now, well, all of the town offices are all connected now on broadband, so David went around surveying people in the buildings, if they noticed any difference, and mostly, no, nobody noticed any difference, but if you go do the internet speed tests on them, they're significantly faster, particularly for uploads, so. One of the things that David really was mentioning was, how do we make sure that people.
can use the technology that we have now, right? So we have capacity here, we have potential to do some things that maybe we weren't able to do before. So he's looking at how to, we're looking at how to, you know, how to do that, how do you make it more noticeable to employees? One of the benefits that appears to be related is that we put the broadband at the library and the library has free Wi-Fi and it seems like a lot of students are using the Wi-Fi out in the parking lot of the library. So it's kind of that unintended, nobody really is thinking that, you know, you're going to put Wi-Fi out there for the, for the kids, but they're after school hanging out at the library, use the internet, so that seems good. And David and Keith are continuing to work with the broadband coalition to see how we could, this is one of the reasons they didn't want to put the financing part on town meeting is that they're really looking at regional collaboration and how we can do regionally change some of the legislation and see some, look at some of the grants and stuff like that. So David is really involved in, David Cole, very involved in that. I believe there's a meeting of the Climate Resilience Committee on Thursday because we just can't get enough of town meetings this week. We're going to have, we're going to have climate resilience on a Thursday.
Well, that's a good purpose, so thank you. Shauna?
Town meeting doesn't go three days in your interim.
Oh, I, you mentioned at the beginning, like, we briefly mentioned it, but I really want to thank Nick Vidmar. Nick Vidmar is our animal control officer, he's all alone in the, in the animal control department over there and he's having to cover whatever he can cover without an assistant. And so of course, horses loose on 88 involves a whole lot of people, so I know Nick worked, I'm sure Highway was out there, I know the police department. The state police, the state police are out there taking all the, all the glory on the internet, but our guys, you know, our, our team here worked really well to, to get that together. So I just want to thank, there's another, like, you never know what you're going to get when you come in in the morning in public safety and apparently.
That's why you miss Mike Perry on the police department, he used to go and rope everything when it was loose, the cows and whatnot.
Apparently, there was quite a backup of traffic.
Yeah, a lot of people.
Well, thanks to everybody that, that got it. The horses are safely back at their location, at their home, yeah.
Thank you, Shauna. I don't have any committee reports because I haven't been to a committee meeting lately, but in terms of future agenda discussion, I assume we will be shortly discussing appointments at that time of the year, pretty soon? Okay, we'll put that on.
I'll see which ones Brian were on too. Got to put the new kid on some of them.
Absolutely, absolutely, okay. Steve?
Nothing crazy, circad, I had bad connections, I was out of town, so not a whole lot there. There's a lot of setup for other committees. Getting through town meeting week and then we'll, we've got infrastructure and whatnot next week, keep plugging along.
Okay. All right, that concludes that item, number eight. The next item is comments and statements from the public, but I don't see any public here.
Well, as Val, as a.
Val, any comments or statements? Thank you.
I did, I'm sorry, one more.
Go ahead.
So Val did point out that they're going to stream the town meeting tomorrow, it's going to be live streamed on YouTube, but you can't vote at home watching it on the internet, but you could watch it.
Okay, well, that's, that's good, that's good. Well, thank you.
Do you have a five-second delay in case it gets crazy, Val? All right.
Once again, we'll remind everybody of the board, committee, commission's vacancy list, which is attached and there are plenty of, plenty of opportunities and we made some progress tonight on some appointments, that's good. Get the word out to everybody that we not only need lifeguards, but we need people to serve in these committees and that's that. Are there any topics, Jim? This is item number 11, Not Reasonably Anticipated 48 Hours in Advance of the Meeting. I don't know of any, does anybody know of any? If not, then that item is complete. We do not have an executive session tonight, so it's time, I guess, for.
Motion of adjourned.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.